Any comments, corrections, or notations? Could I have a motion in regards to that?
We accept the minutes of April 2nd.
I'll second that.
The minutes have been moved and seconded. Is there any action or any discussion of the motion? Excuse me. Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. And thank you for joining us via television if you are still watching. Warrants forty-one and forty-four. Mr. Price?
Yes, we are going to discuss those now. Warrant forty-one, excuse me, forty-three.
Forty-three and forty-four.
Yeah, forty-three and forty-four. Forty-three is payroll, so pretty standard stuff there. But forty-four, you can see in the list here, some expenditures to highlight. The cushion construction at the middle of the first page, that twenty-two, nine, six, seven, sixty-five, is the last payment for the roadwork and contract service for winter maintenance.
And this year, the contract.
Yes, exactly right, yes, sir.
The contract continues.
Thank you very much. Nothing else that sort of draws the eye? Some regional school unit payment and the motor vehicle payment, of course. But yes, very nice, thirty-five, three fifty-one, eighteen oh two for that. Bringing it to an entire total of three sixty-six, two oh nine, twenty-four.
I'll move that amount.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants forty-four and forty-three in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and twenty-four cents. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We have signed warrants forty-one and forty-two. I do think we should take a vote in the amount of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents, just so there is a recorded vote approving that warrant. We don't need to review it further. It was reviewed by all members of the Select Board of Labor Majority and signed. And this is on file and on the website.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants forty-one and forty-two in the total amount of forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants forty-one and forty-two in forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much. We'll move on to Select Board Communications. John, I do know you want to speak to at least one matter. Because you sent me an email. I think you wanted to mention about Cleanup Day.
I thought it was something else. I was thinking of that, but I'm going, ooh, did I forget something?
I'll catch the solar thing.
Yes, on May twelfth, we have our annual roadside cleanup day from nine until twelve. We will meet at the Fairgrounds parking lot off the Church Road at nine o'clock or quarter up. Please wear boots, gloves, and something orange or yellow where cars can see you. We will be furnishing lunch for anyone who wants to have lunch with us. And as in last year, what worked real well, some people couldn't make it. They wanted to make it, but that date was tied up for them for some reason. So I asked that you maybe take the family out with a trash bag and pick the trash off the side of your road. And just let me know which road it is. Like, we've got, for instance, Beaver Dam, we've got Tallwood, we've got South Road, Fog Road, Sadie Dunn. There's some roads that are being spoken for, let's say. But it'd be nice to know so that we don't duplicate our efforts. And please, we need volunteers, as many as possible. It's for three hours and it's a good deed. You know, we clean up our road sides, as many as we can do. We don't get all of them, but we get quite a few of them. My number and email is on the website. It's also in the Messenger this month. So that'll be May twelfth, Saturday, from nine to twelve. Please join us.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any other Select Board members? Communications?
Yes.
Go ahead, Chris.
Please, Chris.
Our Family Fun Day. We have the Lafayette Lodge forty-eight having the pancake breakfast. We have the Trails are gonna do an Easter egg hunt, which I think is really cute, on the Trails.
In August.
Yeah, they won't have to dig through the snow.
Amazing.
I didn't hear that I was strolling down.
Well, pay attention.
Thank you.
I said they wouldn't have to dig through the snow.
Is that Easter Pass or Easter Future?
We have, of course, the library book sale and the Beanhole Supper. And the Friends of the Library are gonna do their soak and wet. And the Friends of the Library are also gonna sell lunch food. And Capital City Improv is gonna put a show on that night with our own Dennis Price.
Right here in Guile Hall.
We're still working on anything. If anybody has any ideas, please come forward.
Any other, Dennis, actually?
Yes, I just wanna say a couple of things. Of course, I wanna make sure everyone gets out to vote and do that. I just wanna make sure that you get a chance. And I know we'll talk about it more, but please, 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 spread the word, get people out. I also wanna say, congratulations to Miranda Cook School. Had a very nice prom, I hear. It was very lovely, so thank you. And I also wanna take just a moment to say, on behalf of me, just because of the great benefit to Capital City Improv, there'd be no Capital City Improv without humble beginnings at the Reed Field Emporium. And I just, I know that Ms. Helen Bittar has passed away. And I just wanted to say that for bringing, you know, the Reed Field Emporium helped me get my start here. And both her and Bob were very helpful in that. And so I just wanna say thank you. And if you get a chance, go have a pizza or something else delicious at that. And that's it, that's all. I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yep.
Anyone else?
One quick question on the library for the book sale that you're gonna have in August. When, where, what time can people bring books?
I'll find out for you, but I think you can bring them anytime, can't they? They're collecting now.
Yeah, anytime.
Yeah.
If you're bringing a lot, it helps to give them notice.
I'm sorry?
If you're bringing a lot, it might help to give them some notice.
Okay.
But...
You're going in with a U-Haul.
And there's two events I didn't mention for Family Fun Day. The Historical Society is gonna have their wine and cheese Friday night. And the Union Meeting House is gonna have their garage sale.
Thank you.
So it's Heritage Days without the fireworks.
It's Heritage Days without the inherited days.
Catherine, do you have anything?
I'm sorry?
No, everybody covered everything.
Oh, okay. I do wanna just simply report that the Solar Project Ad hoc Group, I've talked with both of the chairs involved, so we kinda have the working group set up. And I will set up the next meeting probably within the next two weeks. We'll move on to Town Staff Reports. Eric?
All right. Start with my Town Manager's report. Let everybody know that Heavy Loads Limited signs have been removed. If there are any remaining, which I found, I've heard there was one on Thunder Castle, please disregard them, let us know, we'll pull them down. But those have been finally removed after a wet and tumultuous spring. That spring has affected a number of other activities. We've begun preparing for cemetery work and cemetery mowing. However, most everything's still too soggy for that spring mulch that typically happens. Same thing with the ditches. We've taken a break from doing any brush work because of the condition of the ditches. However, we've had to do a lot of culvert cleaning and tree work because of the amount of sand and those big washouts we had the last couple of weeks have kept the maintenance crew pretty busy. I do wanna point out that we have street sweeping happening. That's the next phase of this spring evolution. And if you could please not sweep or push or dump any sand in the roadway, it makes it, it's hard for them to pick up large piles like that anyway, but it's also, it creates a safety hazard. So I'll advise anybody, please do not, I know it's our sand and we put it in your driveway, but we did, it kept you safe, it kept you safe all winter, and I think it can again. A better option is to just put it in a five-gallon bucket or two and save it for sprinkling next winter, but, or talk to us, we'll find a way to dispose of it, but don't put it in the roadway, please. Last thing on maintenance is that building maintenance has been continuing. And the Clerk's Office is the most recent office to have some work done. It was patched and painted, so moving from the library to the town office here to get some of that done. Administration and personnel, we are continuing to look for someone to fill our full-time seasonal maintenance position. This is the person that helps out in the cemeteries, helps out with other road maintenance work and grounds work. If you know any high school kids, juniors, seniors, recently graduated, motivated people, teachers who might be looking for something to do in the summertime, we're still looking for that person, so please send them our way. We have a staff being scheduled for June twenty-first. And maintenance staff are scheduled to attend two really important sessions for training this spring, one for erosion control and one for gravel roads. So both are excellent sessions, and I'm really pleased that they're able to get out and learn more about how to keep the lake safe. Both of those things. Gravel roads, you don't always think about it, but that type of maintenance is really important to making sure that sediment stays where it's supposed to. So update there. Transfer station, a lot going on. We have the new signage ready, supplemental, for the new traffic pattern and advisory signage for stop and fifteen-minute parking and unloading areas, all of that, ready to go up. And now that the ground's fully thawed, we can start getting that stuff put up. We got the big sign today, it's about four feet by three feet, so it'll be quite helpful, I think. The, let's see, the striping of the transfer station is being redone. Not all of it, but we are most notably orienting those stalls for unloading so that it's not such a hard angle. We're gonna kinda soften that so people can pull in a lot more easily. We'll also be addressing some of the questions around turn arrows and whether or not people can pull through. So some changes there following feedback from the public. I'll report that I attended the annual solid waste and recycling conference. It was exceptional. I am looking forward to bringing two programs forward. One that I've talked about in the past is paint care, which will allow residents to bring oil and water-based paints to the transfer station without having a special collection day. We'll have a band that we can do that on a rotating basis. Also, another program that I'm excited about is textile and clothing recycling, another option that will help remove some waste from our tonnage as costs increase. It's another way to put that stuff to a beneficial use and save some money. Also, we talked about food waste composting a lot at the conference, and that's something that the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee has already taken some steps to move forward. And they are actively looking to find ways to increase and promote backyard composting for folks that are interested and perhaps try out something at the transfer station. So a lot of exciting things happening there. As far as announcements, we are planning a candidate's night for May seventh at six-thirty PM. We have four folks running, two for school board, two for select board. They're all running unopposed, but it's still gonna be a good opportunity to ask some questions and hear what folks have to say. So that's my report for Town Manager. Any questions?
Thank you for your report. I share your excitement about paint. I'm glad that somebody gets excited about it.
About what?
Paint.
Paint.
Recycling paint.
Yeah.
Treasurer's report. Jump right back in there.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
This is the report for the month of March, happening in late April, because the April second meeting, we didn't have time to pull all that stuff together. But check reconciliation was completed for the month, and our accounts were in balance and did match our bank statements. Excuse me, we have received our summary audit, and this is the audit, several schedules and notes and summaries that are included in the annual report. We have not still yet received the full audit. When I do receive that, I'll give you a summary. But in the meantime, I've included this partial audit in the back of, it's not in my Treasurer's Report, it's in the back of this meeting packet for reference. And you'll also see excerpts of that in the annual report when it comes out. March was a fairly standard month. We did see a little bit of unusual activity around taxes, but again, that's more of a ripple effect from folks paying early in December. There was a lot of talk about potential tax benefits, and so we had a lot of people paying early, and that has kind of had a ripple effect, December, January, February, March. And we'll probably see a little bit more in April and May, but that's one reason for a big change. Also, we've had some unusual flip-flops as far as revenue and expense between the year-to-date and the month relative to the prior fiscal year. But in the end, it all seems to work out. This year, we're actually doing fairly well year-to-date. Our revenues are up and our expenses are down slightly. But there are a number of reasons behind that, but in general, things are looking pretty good.
Questions on the Treasurer's Report?
Just thank you again for putting that out on the website and having it done ahead of time.
Yes, thank you. We'll move now on to Boards, Committees, Commissions, Departments and Departments. And I would like to thank the Solid Waste Committee for their comprehensive minutes of April twenty-second, I mean, excuse me, October twenty-second, two thousand and seventeen, and January thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen. And of course, there are members from other towns that also serve on that committee. The Trails Committee, I would like to thank you for your minutes of January thirtieth and February twenty-seventh. The Budget Committee for February fifteenth and March fifteenth, and as I've said in the past, there's a lot of good information in there and how the budget's constructed. The Library Board, minutes of March seventh, two thousand and eighteen. The Conservation Commission, minutes of March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteenth. And the Cemetery Committee, minutes of March twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. And the Reed Field Water Association Annual Meeting Agenda, and I guess it's a report or a set of minutes from, agreed says as a set of minutes, of May eighth, two thousand and eighteen. I know sometimes I'm reading this long list and you're saying, why is he doing that? And that's because we do wanna enter it into the public record that those meetings took place and that those minutes are available and they're online. We will next go to Public Communication. Are there any members in the public who would like to address the Board or ask a question? Don't be scared or shy. Okay, no. Okay, we'll move on to Appointments, Reappointments, and Resignations. We have no resignations or reappointments. We do have appointments for one position for the Library Board Trustees. Is Jennifer Henderson and Jessica Guba, are you here? Okay, is just you?
I'm Jennifer.
Jennifer, is Jessica here? Okay, well, Jennifer, would you please approach the microphone? This is not like the cross-examination we see in Congress. We just, we wanna, we wanna go ahead and welcome you applying for serving as a member of a town committee. And just give you an opportunity, if you would like to say something or if any Board member has a question of you, this is the time we do that.
All right.
So would you like to say anything? You're invited to do so.
No, I'd just like to say that I'm excited about the opportunity to serve on the Library Board. I'm a big supporter of public libraries in general and eager to do what I can to support our public library.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? I will state that it's very unusual to have two applications for an appointment like this and have to make a choice. We don't make the choice tonight because the other applicant isn't here. And if I was to make a recommendation, I would just gone with the first one that is stamped, because there will be a second opening. I actually called the Library Board Trustees Chair, who's on vacation in the Carolinas, but reached her this afternoon. She said they definitely will have an opening on July first, so I'm hoping that Jessica Guba will keep her application open and join us at that time, 'cause we're excited to have her join us as well. So with that, I will go ahead and make a motion from the Chair to appoint Jennifer Henderson for a term that runs through, where is that term?
Six thirty nineteen.
Six thirty, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Thank you for volunteering to do this. It's nice to have someone come on Board and especially who has a love of libraries and has worked in one before.
Yes.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed.
Let's take that vote, all in favor. You're appointed. You can sit or you can sneak right out.
And she's young, too.
Are you implying we'll keep her for a long time?
It's not compelling.
Thank you so much.
She has longevity.
Okay, now we will move on to the discussion of First Park. And Steve Monzlik, who is our Town Representative to the First Park Board of Directors and has really very faithfully served the interests of the town in that position for how long, Steve? Yeah, since almost inception, I believe. So if you'll go up to the microphone, you're going to introduce us to the Park Director and maybe say a couple of words as well. Thank you, Steve. I'm gonna have to get one of those little stands there. I get to sit.
If I may, a couple of things before I start on the KRDA issue. I would like to thank Mr. Price for his words. I did not realize that Helen had passed, and I'm saddened to hear that. And in, I don't know what your Solar Committee or whatever is about, but I did install a fairly large solar installation in two thousand and eighteen. And if I could help with my experiences in that, why, I'd be happy to talk with whoever is doing that.
Your name was written down so fast, it's incredible.
Okay, so Kennebec Regional Development Association, which is mostly known as First Park. As we have discussed, I've been there at least since nineteen ninety-nine. And I have periodically volunteered the position to anyone else who would like to do it. And if someone wants to step up and take my place, I will not be offended in the least.
Mr. Jergen?
About six months ago, we lost our previous executive director. And we embarked on a fairly extensive search, which brought us candidates from all over the United States. And approximately two to three months ago, we were able to hire Mr. Jim Dinko. And he has extensive experience in development associations. I know, I can recall Kentucky, Chicago, Arizona, and I'm sure there are more, but those are the ones that come to mind. So he has come on the Board recently. He has already reached out to some potential clients. One of the things that we do is that we have, we hire a search firm, and maybe I'm stealing your thunder here, Jim, but, who provides us with possible leads. And our executive director will generally follow up on those leads depending upon how plausible they seem. And I know that Jim has visited a few recently and will continue to do more. So without further ado, I give you our new executive director, Mr. Jergen.
Welcome, John.
Steve sort of undersold himself. He's not only Reed Field's representative on our Board, he's also the Vice President of our Board. He's also on the Executive Committee of the Board, or the Executive Board of the General Assembly, I should say. So he dedicates quite a bit of time to the organization beyond just being the representative. Let me just tell you a little bit about the organization. I wanna be as transparent and take your questions and welcome your input while I'm here this evening. We operate, first of all, on an operating budget of almost nine hundred thousand dollars. Now, don't go, woo, nine hundred. The biggest debt from that, or the biggest expenditure, I should say, is for debt service dating back to the late nineties. So annually, out of that nine hundred thousand, we pay over a quarter of a million dollars back to the main municipal bond bank. And then we pay interest on that as well. So really, our operating budget, after that's backed out, is really around five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And that's been pretty steady for the past three years at least. The biggest, how do I say, debt that we face beyond the debt service or expenditures would be for utilities for the streetlights into the park. Those average about five hundred dollars a month. We're transitioning those now to LED lights to help cut the costs of lighting the park. And then those bulbs obviously last longer. We're participating in the state rebate program on those as we replace them. Beyond the streetlights, other park maintenance costs are for mowing. The streets within the park are owned or maintained by the Town of Oakland, so snow removal is by that, by the Town of Oakland. We also keep reserves out of our budget each year for infrastructure, namely for broadband, because the park has broadband Wi-Fi and fiber. We also have quite a few detention ponds for water within the park that require maintenance and upkeep on those as well. So maintenance adds up very fast, as you all know from being selectmen in the community. Marketing is another one of our key costs. As Steve said, we use the group from Montreal that helps identify leads for us. And we do a minimal amount of advertising, but I'll talk more about marketing in a few moments. And then, of course, we have office expenses, which include payroll for the personnel. There's me and a lady who works sixteen hours a week doing clerical and administrative assistant-type work. We mentioned earlier about Steve being the Town's Representative. Mike Roy from Waterville is the President of the General Assembly and our Executive Board this year. He'll serve through June of two thousand and nineteen. James Jerdak, or JJ Jerdak they call him, from Oakland, who's retired, is the Treasurer. Doug Uli from Sidney is the Assistant Treasurer. And Peter Mills is the Secretary. He represents Cornville. Talking, going back now a few moments to marketing, I was discussing that. One of the things we're doing is, it's been at least ten years since appraisals have been done on the seventeen lots that are available for sale or lease within First Park. So commencing this week, we have a gentleman from Augusta who will be doing the appraisals on all seventeen of the lots. And this is important, because post-recession, we'll have a better handle on what the true value of those are. And he'll be doing comps all the way from Portland up ninety-five to Bangor, so, including Brunswick Landing as well. So we know what a true, fair value is for the lots. He'll also be submitting a cumulative value, in case it was a real perfect world and we found a developer or a buyer for all the lots, and what the discount might be that we could give that person that might buy all of the lots. We are also updating signage in the park. That hasn't been visited in quite a number of years. But if you're going to market a property, you should have a for sale or lease sign in front of it. So we're working with a sign maker in Oakland to put such a sign up, calling attention to our website and, again, giving more information about the properties, that they're either for sale or leased, preferably for sale. We're refreshing our website. If you had looked at it a year ago, it was pretty stagnant. We're working with Nancy Marshall, Public Relations and Marketing in Augusta. She's updating- Nancy Marshall, Public Relations and Marketing in Augusta. She's updating that for us. And again, when it rolls out, it'll have information about each of the lots that are for sale, and again, cumulatively, if you're looking and be interested in buying more than one, what pricing we might be able to give you. We are participating May seventeenth and eighteenth in Maine International Trade Day in Rockport. That is for all international businesses located within the state of Maine, and will also host a number, about three dozen international businesses that are looking to locate in Maine. So we are a sponsor of that event. We will have a display there and all kinds of recognition for the Kennebec Regional Development Authority, and namely for First Park, as we try to promote it. After all, T-Mobile in our park is owned by a German concern. So we already have sort of an international flair, if you will, within First Park with T-Mobile. We'll also be participating in Boston, June seventeenth through the twenty-first, at what's called Bio Two Thousand Eighteen. These are life science and high-tech type businesses. The attendance at that show is seventeen thousand attendees from forty-eight states and over seventy countries. Last year it was held in San Diego. Each year they go back and forth coast to coast where they hold it. But we're participating with the group called Maine Bio. They have a large pavilion, and will be about one-fourth of that pavilion. We had a great nonprofit discount by collaborating with them. So speaking with collaboration, we do try to leverage our dollars as effectively as possible with groups like the Maine International Trade Center on Maine International Trade Day, for example, with Maine Bio at Bio Two Thousand Eighteen in Boston. We work closely with the Maine Department of Community and Economic Development, and with the group known as Maine and Company in Portland as well. So we try to leverage our marketing dollars and resources as best we can with those groups. A little bit stepping back to tell you a little bit where we are with First Park. Right now, I mentioned T-Mobile. They have eight hundred and twenty employees. They are the second-largest employer within the region. I think Maine General Hospital is the only really employer with more numbers in our area. We're watching very closely the integration of T-Mobile and Sprint that's being proposed, and we're staying on top of that. We have talked with sources with T-Mobile, and watching where that goes, and ensuring that the facility in Oakland remains there, and perhaps expands would be our hope. But again, that's not a done deal. That has to go through regulatory hearings and so forth before that merger is ever approved. Within the park, though, beyond the eight hundred and twenty employees at T-Mobile, it's a good estimate to say there are at least nine hundred and fifty total employees, though, including T-Mobile. And again, as I said, we have offices within the park from Maine General Hospital, Perry Fitz, Boulay, Fitten, the accounting firm, and a couple of others. L.L. Bean owns two parcels of land within the park, which they pay taxes on. They pay the condo association on time each year. So who knows? There may be some future use of that property by L.L. Bean, we would hope. As I said earlier, the park has fiber, broadband for high-speed internet, and enhanced telecommunications. There's a maintenance included involved with that, but it's a strong selling point. And again, we're trying to target users better. And by the way, I've been here longer than two or three months. I've been here six months. I started November sixth. But since I started November sixth, we've made a more concerted effort, though, to really market that resource, because there are towns and parks that would kill to have that asset. And so we feel very fortunate to have that, and we talk about that front and center when we meet with prospects. As I said, the streets are maintained and services are provided by the Town of Oakland, such as safety and so forth. And they do a great job. Gary is terrific to work with, your counterpart, Eric, there in Oakland. So my vision for the park, what I would most like to see happen, I've kind of alluded to it, would be to find a developer, a master planner, who would maybe take down all or most of the seventeen remaining sites, control them. Again, we would have the Kennebec Regional Development Authority in place to help kind of oversee that transition, and to help that developer market the property. But that's if it was a perfect world. We don't have that person yet, but we're always looking. So that would be my long-term vision, would be to find a single developer instead of trying to sell the lots off. The lots in First Park range from five anywhere up to around sixteen acres. So it's quite a swing. And I'm really excited. And when we get copies of the appraisals, I would like to share those with Eric for him to share with all of you as well. And again, I don't know what that's going to come back like, post-recession, but it should be very interesting. He'll be doing an analysis as well. He'll be speaking to our General Assembly, I believe, in June at its meeting. And again, I'll get word to you, Eric, in case any of the select board would like to attend that meeting as well. But that should be very informational and helpful. So I will stop rambling and welcome any of your questions.
Yeah, and I want to just simply say that questions from the public are also welcome, because this whole community has invested in this park for, since its inception, or since the law was passed. And if you do want to ask a question from the floor, just please come up to the microphone and just ask your question, if you will, so we can capture it on television. Make you a star. Questions for Jim? Please start.
Yeah, John Parent, obviously, on the select board. And I've been, I've been involved in town affairs for quite a few years, on the select board, the budget committee. And I think the most asked question about First Park is, when are we going to be out from under that requirement? And two, what benefits has the Town of Reedfield received for all the money they've paid into First Park?
Well, you're paying twenty-five thousand dollars a year at present in the First Park. Let's use that sort of as a baseline, out of that roughly nine hundred thousand dollar a year budget, or more fairly to say the five eighty-seven after the debt service. We are in the process of doing a head count of all the employees in First Park. That's only as good as the data the employers provide us of where the workers come from within the park. Offhand, obviously, I can't speak and shoot from the hip and say so many come from Reedfield or not. I can give you that number, though, in the next several months as we do this employee assessment. It has to have some economic impact just beyond the number of employees, because of businesses that come there to service T-Mobile, for example, and vendors that we use within the park. So that starts to answer your question, I think, so.
Yeah, and I mean, I've always been cautious. I was certainly one of the people who hopped up that meeting back in the nineties and said, this is a great investment. We ought to do that. And, you know, it has not paid back in revenue dollars as we anticipated, as we've gone through the dot-com, the two thousand and one recession, and then the Great Recession. But I will say, you know, there are some other peripheral benefits that we need to always kind of bear in mind. But I do think when the enactment of the financial arrangement ends in two thousand twenty-one.
June of two thousand twenty-one. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that.
Yeah, June of two thousand twenty-one. Obviously, you know, there'll be a lot of questions about what would we do at that point. And it would be remiss for me not to say that we would want to see a very different proposal. And how, you know, if we were to continue participating. And that doesn't necessarily mean a reduced proposal, but it means a different proposal that shows more direct benefit, I think, to members.
That's a very thoughtful comment. One park that we've sort of benchmarked ourselves against is called Coldstream, which was a huge bluegrass horse farm in Lexington, Kentucky. And the University of Kentucky acquired it probably through an estate. It's a seven-hundred-acre commerce and technology park. We're two hundred acres, just to kind of give you the scale. It started roughly at the time First Park did here in Maine, and it's faced the same obstacles, ups and downs, and so forth with the economy. But anyway, I have visited there twice, and we're emulating some of the successes that that park has had. I've advanced the idea, for example, of us having a business-oriented motel in the park, where T-Mobile, Maine General, and others could use that for people, vendors who come to call on them, or for training. We've talked about even maybe having a small restaurant within the park to provide catering. But these are things that Coldstream has done, that they have found to be very successful. One of the things that's been proposed is to extend a, I don't know if you'd call it a walking or bicycle path, what they call that trail network through Oakland. But part of it abuts First Park, and we'd maybe like to consider extending that into First Park for employees as a quality-of-life thing for them to do before work, or at lunch, or after work, whatever the case might be. Don't laugh when I say this, and I'm, I sort of am advocating for this, but such parks as this around the country actually will have a dog park within them. It might be five acres. It might be land that's less marketable. And again, when I went to Coldstream, they had something like a ten-acre dog park that was, I thought was excessive until I saw the number of dogs in there at lunchtime, that people who lived nearby would go get their dogs, bring them there, and then take them home and go back to work. And it was also, they found one way to market the park. It caused people to come to the park on weekends and so forth to use the big dog run. So, you know, that's outside-the-box thinking, but, you know, again, we're looking at what the trends are with other parks. And you have to consider, this park was developed in the late nineties, and Steve would probably agree, there haven't been a whole lot of changes made in that time, where we have maybe not, you know, jumped on some trends like dog parks, or motels, and restaurants, and so forth to make it more attractive. We're looking at fundamentals. Right now, there's not even a drop box there for FedEx or UPS. And we're looking at putting those in, because again, those are business services. And I'm sure that those, T-Mobile, and Maine General, and others in there are driving somewhere at five or six, seven o'clock in the evening to catch the last run. So we're gonna work on getting that as well.
Yeah, I would, I would add to that, you know, Jim and Steve, we'll invite you back annually, and hopefully you can show us that vision in that direction between now and two thousand twenty-one, because that'll be a pretty tough discussion, I think, at that point in terms of, and I don't mean tough necessarily in a negative, but, you know, it's gotta be a dollar and cents discussion.
Yeah, absolutely. And you have a fiduciary responsibility
Absolutely.
to your townspeople. So what I'd like to leave you with is a business card, so that if any of you have questions or comments or offer me your ideas, I'm welcome. So Eric, can you just pass it around? Call me or email me.
Sure.
Only live twenty-five minutes from here, I could be here. It's a beautiful ride, by the way.
And I do want to make sure everybody, yeah, I did a lot of talking. If anybody else has a question or comment, please do so. And I know, Steve, you want to speak.
I just want to say that I like what I'm hearing, that you're changing things, you're updating it, you're making it more interesting. I mean, it sat stagnant, I think, for a long time, so it's nice to see that that's happening.
Thank you.
Not having a FedEx box there just astounds me. Just that real tail along. Steve, please.
I have a question. It doesn't matter for whom, either of you could answer it. But when this arrangement ends in two thousand twenty-one, how much of the initial loan will still be left, or will that be paid off at that time?
That will be paid off at that time. We actually paid off, we had two loans, one with Maine Bond Bank, and the other one, I can't remember who it was through, but we paid the one off early. It was a smaller loan, because we, while the economic times were difficult, the interest rates went down, so we saved a little money by redoing the notes, and actually, both notes. And so we were able to pay the one off early. So in, at two thousand twenty-one, as it stands now, there will be no outstanding debt at this point in time.
Or interest to pay.
So that will help to reduce some of the operating expense?
Absolutely. I, I-
Unless it increases because you have a lot of economic development, and you need that, and that would be great.
Yes. And hopefully, in that time period, our revenue will increase from taxes we collect in the park. You know, and that's the whole theory behind this, but it's been obviously pretty rough sledding up to this time. One comment I wanted to make concerning changes, we have, and I served on this committee, we have recently updated our codes, our building codes within the park. When the park first started, it was started as a technology park, basically. Our idea was that we were, that the technology industry was the growth avenue of the future. And we really tailored our marketing and whatnot to that clientele. And our building codes within the, within the park were somewhat restrictive. So we have recently revised them so that we are able to accommodate a much wider range of business than we would have been, say, one to two years ago. And hopefully, to make it easier for, and more interesting for other businesses to try to enter the park. John, to address your question about benefits a little bit, I have a couple of observations about the benefits. I think, first of all, without the KRDA and First Park, T-Mobile would not be in the state of Maine today. And their annual outlays are in the twenty-five million dollar range, as far as payroll and expenditures are concerned for the park. Generally speaking, it's kind of a rule of thumb that for every job you create, two are created as a subsidiary to that outside of those actual jobs. So if you take T-Mobile's eight hundred jobs, and you figure another sixteen hundred on top of that, that's a fairly, in my eyes, that's a fairly good economic impact. I, I go back to a comment made by one of our board members from Starks, and she made the comment some time ago, probably six, twelve months ago at a meeting, although we know my, my timetable may not be that accurate. But she made a comment that one of the reasons that Starks got into KRDA was because they knew that there was going to be no businesses coming to Starks. And I think that was a fairly realistic outlook. The, the history for Reedfield in attracting businesses has been somewhat spotty at best, and difficult, I might say, from personal experience. And so having a revenue source thirty miles away that is going to be paying you taxes, now right now, it's, it's a, it's not a positive, it's a negative, but we, at some point in time, the Town of Reedfield will be getting a surplus in revenue from, from businesses that are not located within the town. And that seems to be something that, at least at some points in the town's history, would be looked upon as a benefit. So just wanted to point those couple of things out. Yes?
John, I'm glad. Well, one point. Chris and some other people, I think probably Catherine, put a list together of businesses in Reedfield. You should see the list. It's surprising. Small businesses, a lot of them home businesses, but small businesses anyways. But it is hard to attract any sizable, you know, a Saunders Manufacturing or in town. But I think what would benefit everybody would be if you're invited to come here once a year. We don't want to hear from you once a year. We'd like to get, you know, maybe a monthly to the town manager. You don't need to come in front of the board. Just send an email to the town manager. This is what we've done. You know, we have interest here, we have interest there. I don't know if that's been happening or not, but-
I've been seeing weekly updates.
Just recently, yeah, we started to receive.
I think that started with you.
It started, yeah.
Probably started with you.
I was surprised, yeah. I started that.
And also, if we-
I'm sure you're good at it.
Yeah. Knowing how many people from the town are employed there would be handy, because you're right, you know, there could be some other, it could be electricians, it could be whoever who does work up there. That's, that's all good information to have. It's just that we don't, I don't have information, that information, when somebody- It's just that we don't, I don't have information, that information, when somebody asks me, you know, what are we spending this money for and what did we get? Well, you know, no. I'd be able to tell them, well, listen, we've got, you know, 50, we've got, how many people that work there?
I apologize if you've not been receiving the weekly update on Fridays, but what I, I'll double check. We'll send them to the clerk, and then if she can disseminate those. And I don't know, were you up for election maybe in December or last year? Because we noticed some of the people's names changed, and new people weren't getting them, so...
We'll just do a follow-up right through the town, and members of the public can sign up for that page or whatever as well. So, we'll make sure that happens. I want to thank you, Jim, for coming. Steve, I want to thank you so much for your due diligence and work, and obviously, deep involvement with the organization for the last three months at least. How about a three-minute break?
I bet Mr. Durgan has a question.
Yeah, I did not have a lot of clarity as to asking to make sure the public asked any questions regarding First Park, so please do.
Greg Durgan, Town of Reedfield. First, Steve, thank you very much for 20-something years of going to meetings and carrying on and getting information boards, and thank you, Mr. Dinkle, for coming tonight. Appreciate that. I think a lot of the sins that I have in my mind about First Park really predate you, so this is not personal in any way.
But it is to Steve.
But it's... Excuse me, I couldn't hear.
I said, but it is to Steve for his 20 years.
And a lot of the questions I had, you answered about employees and size of lots and so on and so forth. By your figures, I put together, I'm not a math teacher, Catherine, but we've probably put in close to $500,000 over the 20-plus years towards that First Park. I went to the website to try to find some information about the impact for Reedfield, and I'm glad to hear the website is being revamped. It was not welcoming, I guess to say the least, and I'm not going to take a lot of time. It seemed to be that the website was geared to the state of Maine and recruiting, and I can understand that. But when I typed in under the question block, I typed in several questions about how many employees, what the administration costs, things like that, no information available, no information available. So, you may want to keep that in mind, just so people can find out how it impacts their town. I was amazed at the, I can't believe that park isn't full, because the state of Maine offers incentives that I was blown away by. For example, corporate taxes for the first five years are, they don't have to pay them, and after, between six and 10 years, they only have to pay 50%. There's a qualified employee, personal income tax obligation that for every employee that pays income tax, the, I don't know if it's First Park or the company that employs them gets back 80% of that. I mean, there's some amazing incentives to come to First Park or come to the state of Maine or to do business.
The company that hires them.
The company that hires them, okay. Anyway, you did answer some of my questions. I'd like to see more about the administrative costs. You said you have one yourself and maybe a third employee.
No, no, second, first, she said 15, 16.
16, yeah. And so, I just, I'm pleased about what the board's going to do. Communication's very important. Been around for a lot of years, and this is the second time we've had a director. And about 10 years ago, we had one come, and there were a lot of promises made, and he left shortly thereafter, so I hope to stick around. And good luck with Town of Reedfield, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who would like to ask a question or make a comment regarding First Park?
I'd like to respond to something. Greg, you said you thought the Town of Reedfield was into First Park for a certain amount of money?
Well, you said we paid about $25,000 a year.
Okay, it's actually a page in our packet tonight, and once we've paid expenses and received revenue back over the, it looks like 18 years, it's $295,000.
Go to the math teacher, I'm going to fill the gun.
Yeah, 406K in and 110 out.
Hey, I'm just going with Eric's numbers, so they're not...
Teresa put these together.
Oh, we're going to throw it to Teresa next, okay.
So, they're completely reliable.
$295.
Net.
Net, yeah, right. It's been pretty constant. I mean, expenses have gone up, but in those years, revenues went up. So, it's been about $15,000 a year that we lose. Or that it costs us, I should say. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Gentlemen, thank you for coming. Do sneak out.
We will let you leave this time.
Stay for our next discussions.
Thank you for coming.
So, we will now move on to 18-131. Consider bids for cemetery tree work. Eric.
All right. In your packet is included a copy of the two bids that we did receive, as well as a cover letter in the form of an email by way of a recommendation from our town forester. And I will note that that recommendation is supported by our Cemetery Sexton as well as the Cemetery Committee. We had a full bidding process for this, and it was an expansion from what we had done in the past, and I think that this year, we had an excellent process and good results. We can't always get everybody to bid, but we did reach out to probably close to eight or 10 foresters and professionals directly and advertise widely as well. So, I think we have a good process and a good outcome, and I will let Anna, Carl, or a member of the Cemetery Committee, if they'd like, I'm not sure how that was figured out, but speak to the bids, and any thoughts on the process?
Hi, guys.
Hi, Carl.
Jivani?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Okay. I assume that you guys have a preferred bid?
Bitter.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, the recommendation was for Stevenson Solutions.
To go with Stevenson, yes. Okay, and it said that the ones that Taylor had Xed, but in our list, they're not Xed. Are those the ones that are bold?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And so, my general take from this was that we're going to go with a lot of trimming to try and bring some things under control as well as some removal?
Yes.
Okay. And then there was a question about that he might be subletting to any combination of three different contractors, and how is that going to work? Was he going to be there, who was overseeing? And I was just wondering how that was going to work.
Yes, I believe in the emails, it kind of got missed somewhere, but I do, I did ask Taylor Stevenson those questions. So, the first one is, how do you plan to oversee them? He said he's going to review before and onsite direction. Will you be onsite whenever working, whenever the work will be done? He said yes. And the third question, will you remove all debris and clean up promptly? Yes, as discussed. And that was in the RFP, that anything that is trimmed, removed, taken down is to be removed.
I think it was the last time we had some tree work done. Was there some that was left for a period of time, and then it was taken to the transfer station?
Yeah, we, I thought I could handle it.
We learned from that.
We realized, no.
And I realized that that wasn't...
There was a lot of trees.
That wasn't their fault. It was just a situation that developed, so. And that's all planned for this time?
Yes, yep, everything is to be removed.
Excellent.
Yep.
And so, that all came in at your budgeted price or less?
$4,500 is everything in the bold.
Awesome. And do you feel that, and this can be for anybody, but do you feel that this is going to bring things under control enough for this year? For more years, what's the prognosis?
Well, I met in with Harold, the forester, back in October, and he agreed that there's a lot of work that needs to be done in that particular cemetery, Reedfield Corner, as well as we have six other cemeteries that last year, we tried to do some work in Reedfield Corner. I do believe that everybody planted trees 200 years ago in that cemetery, so, and they haven't had a lot of work done to them, so...
So, they're all aging at the same time?
Yes, yes. Some are worse than others, some, you know, can be safe for much longer. There are some more that are highlighted as more hazards in my eyes, that would either damage cemetery stones, that would cost the town a lot of money to replace those or fix those, so. The scope of the work that we, that Taylor Stevenson had specked out in that would cover a majority of the hazardous situations that I feel that I've been encountering. A lot of limbs coming down after storms, such as that. But again, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, so it will be a continuing effort.
So, this is something we're going to look forward to for a few years until we really get these old beasts under control or removed?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And to follow up with that, have you, have you had any sense of phasing the work? So, this is technically Phase 1, the most dangerous? And then Phase 2, the yellow, you know, trees, the ones that you can sort of figure out? I just loved, I'm sorry for the packet here, but what, the little bit of information that Harold had said, which was a part of an email, I guess, it just, I loved it, was the significant question is, how important are cemetery trees resulting shade to the visitors? You know what I mean? That's a cool line there. And I think that's important to keep in mind. So, what do you think about that? What's your answer to that question? Just so everyone knows, it says, if you view trees as merely an impediment to mowing, then get rid of them as soon as possible, but if the trees contribute shade and help provide a greater sense of serenity, you know, is that, are you working on that, taking that in mind? I assume that you would be doing that.
Yes, I completely agree with that. I think trees are a great idea, granted, there's 30 trees in that cemetery.
Right, right, right.
So, it's a lot of trees, and it's a lot of money and a lot of maintenance. And when I, when I break it down and look at that and how much of a hazard some of them can impose, yes, I love trees, I love the idea of having them, but we need to be able to maintain them within a, you know, financially, so.
Excellent. Sounds good.
I think, I don't have any problem with this, and if you find that the tree work needs to have more done in a particular year, I'd rather see us take charge of that instead of the trees taking charge of us.
Yes.
And if that need arises, so this has to be increased in a coming year, if you could give us an idea of, oh, we have Tree 17. If it were to fall, it would break projected seven stones that would cost us a projected X number of dollars.
Yes.
So, taking this tree down might cost us $1,000, but the stone repair might be $3,500 or it might be $10,000, depending on where it was falling. And so, I think that that's good information for the public to have. I know that's probably difficult to get, so I'm not asking for it now, but I'm just saying, so in the future, as we're looking at some of these bigger trees that need to come down, if we can be kind of getting an idea, because some of those stones up there are pretty darn fancy.
Yes, they are.
And could be pretty difficult to fix.
Yes.
So...
I know it would be a shame to have to fix them.
Exactly.
Some of them are quite simple and irreplaceable. You know, that's the nature of what we're dealing with, right?
Exactly. And so, I understand what you were saying about balancing all of the needs, the needs of the...
Oh, it was in a, well, yes, it was just a...
Right. And just, I just want to make sure that we all understand that we're not just doing this for aesthetics or convenience, but there is an actual dollar cost. If the tree falls down, then we have a different expense.
Yes.
Which is kind of sad on many levels, so.
We try to keep the cemeteries as peaceful as possible, so...
Right, right. The lava flows not so much. Yeah, we don't have...
So, I think, I would just follow up with a, maybe a little bit of a different question, and this is also kind of a debit/credit kind of question as well, but it's with carbon and with oxygen. And so, I, and this is probably not covered by this bid, so I'm talking probably more to the Cemetery Committee and what their long-range plan is. Do we, are we going to see some perhaps different kinds of shrubbery or dwarf trees that are better manageable for that type of landscape? Is that probably the future that we'll see? I see head nodding, and that's all I wanted to...
Yes.
History.
Yes, Deb, yes.
Do, get up there, BB.
You sure?
I'll let you take it.
And you are?
I'm Deb Doe.
I know you.
Haven't been here in a while, how are you?
Good to see you.
All right. So, phasing questions.
Oh, yeah.
For many, for, boy, it's been, what, six, seven years anyway? We have kind of recommended pretty regularly that this get into like the CIP. I think there's an ongoing question as to, help me out, Eric, as to whether or not this is, belongs there, or whether or not it's ongoing work that we have to do as maintenance every year. That's Part 1. Part 2 is that with these maples, it's really hard to tell when one might fall. You have to get in there, I mean, when they fall, you can see the rot, sometimes they don't rot. I mean, because they just fall. So, it's hard to tell. Part 3 is, I think we've had really a lot of discussion about always replanting. And I think that's, now we're at a place where we're losing these, or the trees are coming down, and I think philosophically, there are some that, in the committee, that would like to just see them come down, let's take the risk away. And then there are others on the committee that would really like to see how long we can keep it, keep the canopy there, so. But I think there's always the discussion of replanting with what works now for our current environment, so. Does that help you?
Absolutely. I was just, I just thought it was a really, I just think, I guess for me, the highlight was, you know, it is, it's, I guess it speaks to the complexity of your job, is, you know, I think there are some, there are benefits, but certainly replanting and making sure that it's safe to walk around and, you know, just being smart.
And I think, I think the other thing is that what we, I have learned from my experience on the committee, is that Reedfield was huge one time, a long time ago. And through perpetual care and all the things that we have to deal with, laws, I mean, cemetery laws have more than roads, they have more than many municipal sections, maybe EPA, I don't know, but we're in there too. So, you know, it's surprising to me, and then on top of that, you have to remember that Reedfield was once a pretty bustling place, and all those people are right there. That time has gone by, and they're beautiful. It really is, it's captivating and historical, so. That's my two cents.
Yeah, no, it's wonderful.
In 1991, I drove up that road in the fall, looking for property and relocating in Reedfield, and that canopy at that time on the Church Road, Lower Church Road, was absolutely stunning in October or whatever it was. So, but we have business at hand here, so we have a recommendation on a, we have a recommendation here for tree work to award a contract, I guess. What's the action you prefer?
Are we going to take action on this?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal as set forth with the X's or the bold to Taylor Stevenson...
Of Stevenson Solutions.
Stevenson Solutions, to Stevenson Solutions.
To award that bid.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to award that bid to Stevenson Solutions. Is there any discussion?
Just want to make a point and say thank you to the Cemetery Committee and Anna and Harold for all of their work. I mean, this has been a very involved, and this is a building process. You know, we started really focusing on this and doing it through a bidding process that last year and have been building on it. I think that we're going to continue. I'm not sure it'll ever reach the scale of being a capital project, but I think that it is ongoing maintenance, and I think that the money that's there, $4,500 this year, I think we're $4,505 next year. I hope it continues, and I hope it increases, because it is an asset and a resource, so.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor, and we've had a comment on the motion. Are there any other questions? All in favor of the motion? If it passes, please award the bid. We'll move on to consider, excuse me?
Oh, no, I was just whistling in happiness.
Okay. I thought that was, I thought that meant we went off the clock or something.
No, no, just like so happy.
Tired of drawing, just whistling.
We'll move on to consider nominations for the Spirit of America Awards. They are in your packet. We did not publish them. We like to surprise the people who are receiving them. They are public knowledge, so if there's a member of the public that wants to see them, please come to the town office and go ahead and read them. There are three nominations, and one of those nominations is for a couple, so two people, and so I'm going to make the motion that we award four Spirit of America Awards, and two of them we'll award jointly, obviously, to the applicants within, not applicants, excuse me, the nominees within your packet, and...
I'll second that.
Yep, I think they're all very, very deserving.
Yes, indeed.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? We did have that seconded, right?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd just like to add that I really liked the way that has happened for the last couple of years. I think last year, they were done at the baseball park dedication, and the year before at some other, the beach, maybe.
The volunteer.
Right, we did the whole thing together, and I really like that idea. We had done it at town meetings before, and then we tried it once just kind of during a heritage days, and that didn't work so well, so. I really appreciate the efforts that the town staff has made in recent years, and I'd love to see that continue.
Thanks, if I can follow up on that. We are planning right now, tentatively, the 23rd of June for a, a little bit different, we've been trying to figure out what we like and what works best, but we're trying indoor event. We're going to have a brunch here at Giles Hall, and it will be on June 23, and we'll do, the staff will help make some egg bakes, and we'll do a, something of a breakfast and do the recognition.
Is that a weekend day?
It's a Saturday.
Thank you.
Now, is that for the Spirit of America?
Spirit of America and the volunteer appreciation, all one event altogether.
What time are you going to do this?
I don't recall the exact time. We're still putting it together, but I wanted to make that announcement.
I like morning.
Well, it is brunch, right? So.
I like late morning, brunch sounds good. Vacation will have started.
One at a time, please?
Sorry. Last, last year, you sent out invitations. You plan to do that again?
We do, I've got one on my desk. Like I said, we're still kind of pulling this together. Robbins is working on it, and I think it's going to be a phenomenal event as usual, so.
Good, awesome.
Thank you so much.
I'll give you a blueberry mustard.
Sounds good. Okay, so we have new business, old business, and sort of in between that, we have kind of redo business.
In between.
And so we have two items here. We did have the, the public hearing on the cemetery ordinance and the property tax assistance ordinance, and we found some drafting errors or oversight or whatever. So on both of those, those warrants had not gone through the final posting and comment period entirely, so we're able to go in and make some adjustments, and I understand the cemetery committee met in regards to the changes which you see in blue, is that correct?
Yes, I don't know the outcome.
And then a clean copy to follow. Would you like to address this?
Yes, as you all probably know, during the budget hearing, people took another look at the cemetery ordinance and says, well, some of Section 5 doesn't actually reflect the way the town does business. Probably my fault, I was the one who drafted most of Section 5. So we said, well, can we fix it? And several folks said, yes, we can, and over the course of the next day, did the revisions that you had suggested. We met tonight at 6:15, and the cemetery committee is unanimous in its support for the revisions. You know, we didn't want to change the way the town did business, we just wanted to codify it.
Right, so there's absolutely no change in terms of how cemetery finances work, but as, as Mr. Tolman said, there's, it's been codified. We have the right percentages in the right places, right?
We do now. And clearly stated.
Clearly stated. And so we will vote on this tonight, just to verify that we're putting this out to voters, and then we'll post this warrant, and then there is opportunity for public comment if they wish at the next select board meeting. Okay, so could I have a motion in regards to this? First of all, did anybody else want to say anything from the cemetery committee? I want to thank you for quickly gathering and helping make, I mean, the other option would have been to hold the ordinance. But, you know, you did a lot of work.
Yeah, oh, my lord.
And I think it's good to get in front of the public, we had a hearing on it.
Ain't nobody got time for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the new cemetery ordinance as amended by vote of tonight.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the final language in the ordinance to post. All in favor? Thank you.
May I interrupt for a moment?
Please do.
I think I made this comment one other time, but it would be very helpful for me, and I'm sure other people reading on the website, to know why there were two cemetery ordinances there, so if there could just be some note that says, this is a revised copy, and this is the original copy, and it's for language changes, then I'd know why I was reading it, instead of trying to read it and going, what are we doing here? So that's just a editorial aside. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to 18-096, which is to consider a final draft of property tax assistance program ordinance. We had one word in there that was incorrect, and we were caught on it at the public hearing, which is very good.
That's right.
And somebody, I can't even remember who, but said, why do you have the word "fund" in there?
Yeah, it was Marty.
On page, yeah, on Section 5B, and so that word has now been struck, because it was just a hanging word, didn't make any sense.
I will make a motion to approve the revised property tax assistance program ordinance, which has only removed one word, "fund."
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to strike the word "fund" from the property tax assistance program ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to 18-120, which is to sign the final town meeting warrant to include the attached ordinances and ordinance revisions. I don't know if we need to actually take a vote on this, I think we just need to have the signing.
Nothing has changed, is that correct?
In the, in the warrant itself, nothing has changed. It was just the ordinances, and so I think that you're right, that.
And we voted on those ordinances that were.
Just tonight.
Just had changes, so.
And previously on the warrant, yes.
Everything else has been previously approved, so we will circulate for signature the final town meeting warrant, which will be posted. If you do have a comment on that, you can make it at the next meeting, which will be on May 14, is that correct?
Yes, and so there will be a formal hearing notice, publicized in, you know, accordance with state law, also with the postings that will be happening very shortly.
Right. That'll probably be a short hearing, because we've already really had the hearing that we sent the cards out on and so on and so forth.
Yeah, this is a formality at this point.
But it certainly is an opportunity for any comment.
Sorry.
With that said, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
The most popular motion. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor? Thank you.